All right, at this time I'd like to open citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step in the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda? Saying none, says that participation's closed. Moving on, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. On the board's commissioning committee's schedule, the next city council meeting will be July sixteenth, or I'm sorry, yeah, July twenty-first. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna have that at City Hall, if that's gonna be here, but we'll make sure that that's put out before the meeting. Moving on to whole business and table of items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash two four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Eisen.
In accordance with the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic, Missouri by amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter one thirty, Municipal Court, Article one, General Provisions Regarding the Term of Office of Municipal Judges.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash two four?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Again, we have Mr. Eisen here, moving over a brief overview of the last meeting. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns from the council, we'll get you the microphone, and you can address those before we move on to a real call vote. Saying none, roll call vote.
Councilmember, I'm trying to do two things here, just, Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Bashir's.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
That motion carries eight to zero. Now we'll move on to Resolution number two zero dash R dash one eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, declaring the results of the June second, 2020 municipal election. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Have a motion?
Say it.
And a second. The latest results of the June second, 2020 municipal election have been certified by the clerk of green in Christian County. The results are as follows: For mayor, a four-year term, Jeff Fussrey, number of votes four hundred and twenty-seven. Councilmember Ward one, for a four-year term, Eric Franklin, number of votes eighty-four. Councilmember Ward two, for a four-year term, Gary E. Wilson, number of votes eighty-four. Councilmember Ward three, for your term, Christopher Updike, number of votes one hundred and twenty-two. Councilmember Ward four, for a four-year term, Jennifer Lynn Mitchell, number of votes one hundred and twenty-two. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the certification of the election results? Saying none to certify the results, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Now, we're gonna do the worst part of the meeting, which is send off to our great council members. It has been an absolute pleasure, a privilege, and an honor to work with the two of you. I knew Mr. Jones fairly well, I knew Mr. Bashir's from some years back, but it was a comfort for, especially for a new mayor coming in, to have a couple of people that were seasoned and understood how things worked, and had a great vision for the city, knew where we wanted to go, and more importantly, knew what we needed to do to get there, and have always supported the city staff, the citizens of Republic, and the furtherance of this city. So it's, I hate to see you all leave. That's, that's not anything against our new council members, because we're glad to have people willing to serve, just like you all do. But I don't think all of the citizens know that they're, even though it's a council position, or a mayor position, or whatever it is in the city, you all have sleepless nights because of things that come before the council decisions that have to be made. There are times where you wish it could just not come to the council meeting, not have to deal with some of those issues, but you all, both of you, have always shown up and taken your roles very seriously, and I just, I can't thank you enough for helping me to get through some of these phases and stages. And I wish that everyone had an outlook like both of you, that we can agree to disagree. We've not always gotten along in some of the council meetings, but we walk out as professionals and people who understand the differences of opinion, and that doesn't mean age. So you've done it for the betterment of the city in everything you've done, so, again, the city of Republic owes you a debt of gratitude for what you've done for us, for this city. So I have some plaques here for you, but before I give them to you, I'm gonna ask Mike, Mr. Landis, if you could take the microphone over, I'd love for you all, if you have something to say, then say what you got.
Does anybody need the wipes here? No. They all said no.
I was asked when I came down, it's a bittersweet night, and it kind of is. Over the years, we've progressed on many different issues, and like the mayor said, sometimes we're on one side, sometimes on the other, but we're always thinking about what was good for the city of Republic. I think I'm probably the luckiest people on earth. I thank God daily that I was able to be born in this area, in Republic, be able to live here all my life, be able to work here, over fifty years, in our Republic school system, be able to serve on the council, I don't know how many years it was for sure, but we started back around two thousand. My son is currently twenty-nine, and I remember we were campaigning the first time, it was around two thousand, he was eight or nine years old, and he was on his bicycle, and we were spreading leaflets left and right all over the city and Ward four, and he was having a heck of a time, just kinda, and he was racing the sister, she was helping also, but it's been a fantastic time, I really enjoyed it, and when you leave a board or organization, you always think, you know, is there anything else I could've done, something I could've brought up, whatever. Right now, I'm at rest with myself. I think the council that we have right now has done a super job, I really do, and, and looking at the people that we have now, and the two fantastic people coming on, you know, the city of Republic is in great hands, and I've mentioned over the years that any organization is never any stronger than the weakest link that we have, and that includes every single person that works for this city. I don't care what your job is, department headed down, the person that may have been hired today, it doesn't matter, but Republic is in a great spot right now, the best I've ever seen. When I was in high school, we had a sign out, as you come in from Springfield, at least a twenty-five-hundred good neighbors, that was twenty-five-hundred. I'll date myself, that was nineteen sixty-three, and it's considerably grown now, and has really prospered. So, thanks you all for your support, I appreciate you all.
Well, in nineteen sixty-three, I was seven years from coming into the world, so, no, I, I, I can't say enough good about the people that I've had the pleasure of working with, serving alongside. This council, the leadership of the city, the staff, and, and the citizens have been phenomenal. The, the one challenge that I kinda gave myself when I, when I accepted the position, I was actually appointed to the position five and a half years ago, and then was subsequently elected, is everything that came before this board, I've always tried to look at it as, should government be involved here in this issue? And that's my challenge to our incoming servant leaders, when you're looking at something, is, is this something that government should be involved in? And if you can answer that question with an open mind and a pure heart, you got no worries. Thank you all, Mr. Mayor, again, the, the support, the, the level of, of logic and intellect that exists within this board right now is phenomenal, and has been a wonderful thing to lean on for the last five and a half years, so thank you.
Thank you. You're missed, if I didn't turn it over to the council. If anyone would like to say anything about these two fine gentlemen before they exit stage, right, Mr. Franklin, can we get the microphone, Mr. Landis?
I feel like Oprah on a talk show. I want the audience here.
Appreciate very much what both of you had to say to us this evening. I've had the opportunity to, to watch from the audience, and also the opportunity to watch from up here, and both of you throughout this entire time, appreciate all of your knowledge, everything that you've had to say, it's very helpful to know, and just coming in and being comforted by the wisdom that you all have to offer, you've been here for a long time, it's been great for the city of Republic, for your involvement, and it's been great for me, your involvement, and I really appreciate everything that you've brought here to council. But thank you very much, and hopefully you remain our members.
Any other council members, Mr. Russell?
You know, thank you, thank you for your service, but I still will never forget the smile that Mr. Bashir's has on his face every time I have to sit up there in that spot, too rarely, and he seemed really pleased in the beginning, and now I get it, but what really made being on city council stick with me was when Mr. Jones called me. We had to interview, or I, I got appointed as well, and I had to interview, and I interviewed with the mayor and the city administrator, and that was, that was intimidating and tough, but when you called and interviewed me to give, so that you could be informed and give your thoughts to the mayor, that was when I knew that being on city council was for real. You have treated this like a job every single time you walk in the door, and you both have been an example of serious, firm, and I appreciate it. It's leading by example.
Any other council members? Okay, well, we have some plaques here for you while we, I'm, I'm wearing these for, just to say, you know, so, Mr. Jones, plaque for you. Presented John Jones, Councilmember Ward three, October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, June sixteenth, twenty twenty, and it's thank you for your outstanding vision, dedication, and commitment while serving the citizens of Republic. Okay, all right. All right, we have another one with a few different dates. Mr. Bashir's, as, as he stated, he served on the council twice. He left once and came back, and in total, about twenty years or so, and we fully expect that now that he's leaving, he's probably gonna come back again, so, it's either gonna be Ms. Mitchell or Mr. Dyke, and watch out, Mr. Bashir's is gonna come back. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I would ask Mr. Franklin, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Updike, and Ms. Mitchell to join me here in the middle for swearing again for your positions.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mr. President.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for my office by law.
For my office by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And, and of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Republic.
City of Republic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
In me and myself in office.
In me and myself in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
So I apologize to the audience, in order for their votes to be legal, so you can sign their oath of office. I'll have you sign both of these, and I'll come back in. Okay. Can I, your oath of office should get one of those, and make sure, take a copy for the city, and they'll take a copy for you. Okay, and just that quickly, we will now open the floor for recommendations or nominations for election of mayor pro temp. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson would make a motion to nominate Mr. Matt Russell for the air pro temp, not a second. Got three seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion carries seven, zero, with one abstention, did not want to vote for himself. Okay, thank you all, welcome to city council, to our new council members, we're gonna hit the ground running to get through this, okay? If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Staying with new business, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill number two zero dash two five. Have a motion? Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Eisen.
In accordance with the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving amending the zoning code and official zoning map by changing the classification of approximately zero point four seven acres located at one two seven East Mill from medium-density single-family residential R one M to two-family residential R two.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Mayor. April O'Brien Swanson is requesting a change in zoning classification of the subject property located at one twenty-seven East Mill. The property is currently vacant. The applicant has expressed interest in building a duplex on the parcel upon resounding approval. Permitted uses in the R two zoning district include two family dwellings or duplexes, zero lot-line dwellings, and single-family dwellings. The city's community development department has reviewed the request and provides the following analysis. The city's comprehensive plan generally encourages the expansion of residential development through proactive rezoning of areas where infrastructure is capable of supporting the intensity and density of the proposed use. The future land use maps designation of the property is Main Street District. The Main Street District is described as downtown Republic with a mixture of office, retail, commercial, multifamily, and locked residential. The Main Street District was introduced into the land use plan to accommodate future recommendations from a proposed Main Street development plan to guide development in the subject area. The district was codified as a new zoning district to correlate with the flow. Today, there are no corresponding zoning parcels in this particular zoning designation. The two thousand and five land use plan also identifies land use goals and objectives related to residential development, including the following. Encourage higher-density development to reduce the amount of infrastructure and cost to the developer, and also to reduce the maintenance cost to the city. Encourage the development of infill housing. Diversify the Republic housing market. Promote all types of residential development, and to improve the quality of all types of housing within the city. This plan also identifies neighborhood principles and development guidelines to provide guidance for how a mixture of land uses can work together to create a community. These guidances include Republic should be a full-service community for a diverse population consisting of neighborhoods designed for human interaction. The guideline for this particular principle includes the following. A range of housing types and sizes to accommodate households of all ages and sizes should be provided in each Republic neighborhood. A mix of housing types within a neighborhood creates visual and economic variety, as well as opportunities for a more diverse population. The subject property is surrounded by medium-density single-family zoning to the north, south, east, and west. The parcel can be adequately served by existing water and sanitary sewer services. The low increase of traffic potentially generated by a duplex zoning district does not warrant a traffic impact study, and there are no identified sequels or areas of foot lane. Several community members did speak at the planning and zoning commission meeting in opposition of the rezoning request. We also had several community members speak in support of the request. The city did receive petitions from two property owners. These petitions did not equate to the thirty percent or more required for a mandatory two-thirds vote. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of four to one. And then finally, the staff considers the proposed rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan, generally consistent with the trend of residential development in the area, compatible with surrounding land uses, and able to be served by existing utility services. Staff is recommending the approval of the application.
Thank you. We did not have anyone that I'm aware of show up to speak in opposition to this, is that correct? Is that in?
At the planning and zoning meeting?
Today.
Oh.
I mean, here at this meeting, I apologize.
Um.
I don't believe so, but we do have the applicant, Ms. Swanson, here available for questions, or comments, or concerns, so, I'd like to open it up to the council, if you have anything that Ms. Haynes, or even a question for the applicant.
I just have one question, to maybe you step by, you just wanted to go, this, isn't that, you're in the library, so, if anybody could.
Sure, sure. I'd love to, first of all, my name is April Swanson, and five generations of my family live in Republic, so I love this town. I've been an occupational therapist for right at about twenty years, and eight of those years I spent in home health, and so I have been in hundreds, if not thousands, of homes in this area, and I've seen the barriers that a home can present, and I've just developed this passion for developing spaces and homes that are accessible, and another key component of why it needs to be a duplex is the affordability. So it's just, it's just my passion, it's just my drive to develop and design a home that is barrier-free for people who might be aging or have abilities that are different from normal, what you might think is normal. So we know that ten thousand people a day are turning sixty-five, we're, we're an aging community, and just a short few years, we will have more people over the age of sixty-five than we will have children, which has never happened in the history of forever in this country. So our needs as a community are changing, and we need to support the needs of those who are aging, but we also need to support those with a disability that might use a wheelchair. You know, our officer creeping, you know, is going to be using a wheelchair, and his home is probably not gonna work for him any longer, and so hopefully he will find someone that can design a home for him that is also accessible, that he can use to support his needs. And I think, I think that, I didn't really realize that that lot wasn't, I didn't realize that I was gonna have to go through this process, so I'm learning, but I really am passionate about it, and it's something that I'm going to hold on to, and, you know, I'm not an out-of-town developer or anything like that, it's something that I'm just, just passionate about, so.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay, saying nothing, thank you, Ms. Swanson, very much. Remember, this is a first reading, if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, please give it to Ms. Haynes. Will you all need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill number two zero dash two six?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
In accordance with the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving amending the zoning code and official zoning map by changing the classification of approximately zero point four seven acres located at six one six North Phelps Avenue from medium-density single-family residential R one M to high-density single-family residential R one H.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. White Oak Holding is requesting the zoning classification for the R one N to the R one H zoning designation. The property does currently contain a dwelling. The applicant has expressed interest in demolishing the current dwelling. Permitted uses in the R one H include single-family dwellings, and then residential accessory structures that are accessory to those permitted uses. The city's community development department has reviewed the request and provides the following analysis. The city's comprehensive plan generally encourages the expansion of residential zoning through proactive zoning of areas capable of supporting the intensity and density of proposed uses. The future land use maps designate-
The future land use maps designation designation of the property is medium-density residential. Uh, the medium-density residential Flume designation is described as uh two-family development at a density of four to seven uh units per acre. The two, two thousand and five land use plan uh does describe land use goals and objectives relating to residential development, which do include the following. Encouraging higher density development to reduce the amount of infrastructure and costs to the developer and then maintenance costs deferred to the city. Encourage the development of infill housing, diversify the Republic housing market, and to improve the quality of all types of housing in the city. Uh, this land use plan also identifies neighborhood principles and development guidelines to provide guidance for a mixture of land uses throughout the city. Republic should be a full-service community for a diverse population consisting of neighborhoods designed for human interaction. Uh, the guideline for this particular principle does include a mixture of housing types within a neighborhood to create visual and economic variety as well as opportunities for a more diverse population. The subject property is surrounded by medium-density, single-family residential zoning to the north, south, east, and west. Uh, the parcel can be adequately served by existing water and sanitary sewer services. The low increase of uh traffic potentially generated um does not warrant a traffic impact study for the rezoning request. There are no identified singles or areas of floodplain. Uh, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval by a vote of five to zero. Uh, there were no community members that spoke in opposition of this rezoning request. And staff does consider the proposed rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan. Generally consistent with the trend of residential development in this particular area. Compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and able to be served by municipal utility services existing in the area. We are recommending approval of this application.
Thank you for opening up the council. Mr. Crawford, uh, would you like to speak? You know, I have a part here for you to speak. In favor of the?
I'm happy to.
Okay, sure. You have five minutes. I'll let you have it.
I know. It's a big question. I don't want to take it for a meeting. I bought this a couple of years ago. Sorry, I said so long. It's a big lot. I was a few feet short of dividing it. So with this high density, I think that'll make a you know, nice uh couple of parcels for nice volumes. That's my pitch.
Thank you, sir. Uh, open it up to council because we have the applicant here, Ms. Haynes, if there are any questions, comments, or concerns before we move on. Got a bunch of head shaking though. So, Mr. Crawford, thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Remember, this is the first read as well. If you have any questions, please give them to Ms. Haynes between now and next meeting. On to the business resolutions. Resolution number two zero dash R dash one nine, a resolution of the city that should say two zero. So two thousand and nineteen resolution. I got you. I wanted to make sure we were on the right track. A resolution to the city council of the city of Republic Missouri awarding the bid for the fencing and kennel construction at the Republic Animal Control Facility. In motion and a second. Have a motion and a second. And Mr. Pritker?
Good evening. As we approach completion of the animal control shelter, um, we're getting down to the finishing touches on it. This is one of those things. Uh, this bid is for the uh dog rooms and the kennels that are actually go in the back of the control center for uh all the dogs. We received two bids for them. Uh, one from Carhan White was fifty-three thousand eight hundred and Midmark Corporation was ninety-four thousand thirty-six dollars. So we're recommending uh award to Carhan White.
Thank you. Open it up to council for any questions, comments, concerns, or discussion. Mr. Self? He says it makes sense. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Okay, saying none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. It's like your stand up there, Mr. Pritker. Uh, next one is resolution number two zero dash R dash two zero. A resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri awarding the bid for the observation cages construction at the Republic Animal Control Facility. Motion and a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And again, Mr. Pritker?
Thank you. Um, another one of those uh finishing up items, um, the observation cages. Up going both the dog and cab rooms of the animal control facility. Um, we received three bids on this one. Uh, Midmark Corporation at thirty-five thousand. Shoreline at just over thirty thousand and Direct Animal Products at twenty-six thousand. We are recommending award to Shoreline, um, even though they worked the low bidder because the low bidder did not need the requirements in the bid that we need to meet for departmental reasons. So um, that's what we're recommending.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Discussion. Okay, saying none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Pritker. Moving on to resolution number two zero dash R dash two one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri awarding the bid for the purchase of network switching hardware. In a motion and a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And Mr. Salee, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. You got me on track. All right, we'll open it up to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. We're looking to purchase new switches for the city which would pair with the uh new thumb system that is being put in place. Uh, the ones we currently have are end of life by the manufacturer. No security updates for no support for this issue with them. And I think it will allow us to move uh to a ten times faster internet speed for the city. So any internet process we use would be faster for people like the city. Uh, there's two bids, one from Pearson Kelly, which was just over forty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. And the other was from CDWG at twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. We're recommending CDWG since they're pretty much identical bids.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Okay, saying nothing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Salee.
Thank you.
And the last resolution for the night, resolution number two zero dash R dash two two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri approving the audit report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Any motion and a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Parsons.
The city of Republic contracted this year with KPM CPAs and advisors for the yearly financial statement audit. And this year also contains a single audit. At this time, I would like to introduce John Cummings CPA to come and present the audit report to council.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Everyone should have a bound booklet. Want to say welcome to the most exciting uh meeting of the year. To everyone, especially the community members. Uh, this is my favorite thing to talk about. So uh, we're gonna start on page four of the bound booklet. Uh, this meeting is moving pretty quickly, so I will try to not break that up too much. But if you have questions, feel free to stop me and ask. Uh, if you're not feeling comfortable with questions tonight, give them to Debbie. She has my cell phone and email and everything. You're welcome to access that and call me anytime tomorrow, anytime during the year. So uh, I want to get questions answered as they come. So again, my name is John Cummings. I'm an audit services shareholder with KPM CPAs out of Springfield. And this is the Independent Auditor's Report Financial Statements for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Page four is the Independent Auditor's Report, and we discuss the report on the financial statements and management's responsibilities for those financial statements and our responsibilities as auditors. Now, in case you are not aware, the uh state of Missouri requires the cities of your size have audits. And also the various debt agreements that you have require an audit. And then, as Debbie alluded to earlier, uh, if you expend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal dollars, uh, federal grants, then you are subject to a uniform guidance, single audit, which is uh basically a federal grant compliance audit. So we wrap a whole lot of stuff into this great big report, and I'm gonna read every last bit of it tonight. And so I will read very fast, uh, but, but seriously, no, I'm not gonna do that to you. Uh, that's kind of a summation of what this audit is as far as process. It, it deals with the financial statements and whether or not they are materially correct in accordance with accounting standards. And on page five, you'll see that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present barely in all material respects the respective financial position of governmental activities, business-type activities, and each major fund of the city as of December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. That is a clean or unmodified opinion. That is the best possible result you can get on your financial statements. So good job on that. So with that, uh, we're gonna turn over to page nineteen and look at the balance sheet for your governmental funds. Uh, these, this uh section of the financial statements basically breaks down how you would budget for it through the year. And I wanted to kind of go over some highlights. I know that Debbie and her team all give you a lot of financial information, so I won't get into the weeds too much. But if you do have questions on something, feel free to ask. So the balance sheet shows the general fund, the street fund, the stormwater improvement fund, the buyer sales tax fund, parks recreation fund, the capital improvement sales tax fund, and your debt service fund. All of those are governmental activities or things that are primarily funded with taxes. And in this, uh, you had total assets in your general fund of five million one hundred forty-six thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars, which is up about five hundred fifty-three thousand compared to last year. And in that increase, uh, you had total unrestricted cash of two million seven hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars, which is up from last year by about three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's good movement on the balance sheet. Your other special revenue funds and the debt service fund uh all actually increased for the, or actually decreased for the year by two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The bulk of that was actually a decrease in your intergovernmental uh or grants receivable number. It was actually down by about two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars because congratulations, you're done with your big federal project as of the end of the year, as far as grant funds go. So uh, that number was down two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. The total across all your governmental funds, not including general fund, was down two hundred ninety-five thousand. So you can see that those other funds were pretty flat, absent the grant activity. Overall, you had total assets across all your funds in governmental of nine million seven hundred forty-three thousand four hundred fourteen dollars, which is up about two hundred fifty-three or two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars compared to last year. So overall, pretty good year. And when I drive through Republic, prior to recent circumstances, it was every day of the week on my way to work. I could see all the progress that was going on. The working from home during the whole COVID thing kind of put a damper on my driving. I kind of made a joke the other day and said, my truck sent me a text message saying, what did I do? And so when I drive about fifty thousand miles a year and all of a sudden I think I put two tanks of gas in it and maybe, I don't know, that whole fifteen-week period or whatever it was. So it was, I'm wondering what I, what was wrong. So uh, anyway. So on the liability side, which is the other side of the ledger for those same funds, the uh general fund had total liabilities of two hundred nine thousand nine hundred three dollars. That's up about thirty thousand compared to last year. And then when you look at your special revenue funds combined, uh, basically your liabilities were down about two hundred forty-one thousand compared to last year. Again, that had to do with the grant um activity. You had tables at the end of last year associated with your federal grant project. And those were down for the year by about two hundred sixty-three thousand. So overall, good movement in the liabilities area because they were down overall by uh two hundred eleven thousand compared to last year at three hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So on the next page, kind of see the rest of the balance sheet. The general fund had deferred inflows of resources of twenty-five thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars. That's roughly the same as last year. And ending total fund balance of four million nine hundred eleven thousand two hundred fourteen dollars, which is up about five hundred twenty-two thousand compared to last year. Your street fund decreased by about sixteen thousand to one million two hundred thousand nine hundred dollars. The stormwater improvement fund had nine hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred thirty dollars of fund balance. That's down about three hundred sixty thousand compared to last year. Buyer sales tax fund is five hundred two thousand four hundred forty-five dollars of fund balance, which is up a hundred and thirty-six thousand compared to last year. Your parks and recreation fund had eight hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars in fund balance, which is down about a hundred and seventy-six thousand compared to last year. The capital improvement sales tax fund increased for the year by about two hundred fifty-eight thousand and ended at eight hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars. And then you had your debt service fund of sixty-four thousand sixty-four dollars, which is up sixty-four thousand dollars compared to last year. So any questions on balance sheet stuff? We'll turn over to uh page twenty-two and look at the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for those same funds. And uh basically this is an income statement. General fund total revenues were up about two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars compared to last year at six million one hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Your taxes were uh, which is a net number, is sales taxes, property taxes, franchise taxes, motorfield tax, kind of everything that you throw in there. Anything that's a tax. Uh, and the general fund made up the five million four hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. That's up about eighty-six thousand compared to last year. So uh, kind of flat in the tax area as a percentage of total budget. Your total revenues for all funds, including general fund, were thirteen million six hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. That's up about one point one nine million compared to last year. And that is primarily because if you look at the street fund, you had intergovernmental revenues of one million nine hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars. That's an intergovernmental grant revenue. You're gonna see a theme as we go through this. On the expenditure side, the total expenditures in the general fund were six million four hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars. That's up about a hundred and thirty-five thousand compared to last year. Of course, the street uh fund had increase of one point one million dollars compared to last year at total expenses of three million eight hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. The others were basically flat. You can read them across there as you wish. Total expenditures across all funds were fourteen million two hundred forty-four thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars, which is up about one point five billion. And that is reflective of the increase for the grant project plus the local match that you had to put with it. So the Fed paid part of it, the city paid part of it. And that's pretty much the increase in expenditures that you had for the year. On the next page is the wrap-up of this particular schedule. And in the general fund, you can see that you had other financing sources of seven hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars that gave an increase of five hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and ending balance of four million nine hundred eleven thousand two hundred fourteen dollars. And on the special revenue funds and debt service total, uh, they combined to decrease by about ninety-five thousand. That left a total uh increase for the year of four hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and ending total governmental fund balances of nine million three hundred three thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars. So what I would consider to be a very strong financial year for the city. And I'm hopeful that that will continue. We'll kind of talk more about current circumstances uh here in just a little bit. Next page I want to flip over to is uh page twenty-seven. Just talk briefly about your water fund and your sewer fund. This is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for the proprietary funds and the R water fund and the sewer fund. In the water fund, you had total operating revenues of two million forty-eight thousand six two hundred and sixteen dollars. That's up a hundred fifty-one thousand compared to last year. The total operating expenses were one million seven hundred nineteen thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars, which is up about three hundred eighty-four thousand compared to last year. That left an operating income of three hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, which I would consider to be strong. And the non-operating revenues and expenses combined were two hundred sixty thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars of revenue. Transferred out two hundred fifty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars, and that left a gain for the year of three hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and ending balance of three million seven hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars. In your sewer fund, total operating revenues were three million two hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars. That is down about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand compared to last year. Expenses were down about thirty thousand for the year at two million two hundred eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars, which leaves an increase for the year on operations of one million eight thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars. You had non-operating revenues net two hundred eleven thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and transferred out three hundred and four thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars, which left a gain for the year of nine hundred fifteen thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and an ending balance of seventeen million four hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars. So that is pretty much the uh financial picture for your enterprise funds. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Kind of going fast there, but I think I'm making great time. I mean, I assume that people are happy that the auditor is moving fast, so if I am going too fast, slow me down. I mentioned that you did have a single audit, and on page 81 of the bound report, you'll find, actually, if you flip to page 80 first, that'll be a couple to go over. Page 80 is the summary schedule of findings and question costs, and this is directly pertaining to your single audit. And it basically discusses the opinion that you got on your financial statements and if they were controlled.